My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the last meeting.
Yeah, say something quick.
Okay.
I was close to approve the agenda, I did find that out of reading in the book.
Okay.
And in that situation, I don't want to approve the agenda because it's not right, but I want to make a motion to add a closed-door meeting at this time without the attorney to discuss an HR issue immediately following the other closed-door meeting never going to have, that you have on the agenda.
Without coming back to the main meeting?
Yeah, right, just without the attorney prep.
Okay, so we need, on the record, we need a statement. You're going to wait to say it, or do you want to say that now to add it to the agenda? You'll say it later?
Oh, yeah, after we, we'll have it after the, you know.
Come back, you'll say it?
Yeah.
Did you, um, make an amendment?
Making a motion, right, so we have the meeting.
I'll second that motion. So are we motioning, are we voting on going to the closed meeting without getting your record, the statement on record?
We will have your record after, after the meeting, yeah.
I don't think we can vote on going to that closed meeting until we have the statement on record.
Well, yeah, we want, we want to approve the meeting, yeah, so we can have the meetings, correct?
Are you saying approve the agenda or approve the meeting?
I approve, I want to approve the meeting.
We can't approve the meeting until we hear the record, the statement of what the meeting's for.
I just told you it was for HR issues.
When I read the reasons why you have a closed meeting, there are seven types. Two are a must and five are a may. In the may category, HR issue is not one of them.
I would advise to propose one or more meetings for preliminary consideration of allegations you're charging against an individual subject to its authority.
Is that, that's the one you're doing? So that's under the must be closed?
Yes.
And that individual must be notified ahead of time?
No, he doesn't.
No, no.
No.
I, did you, I'm just going to ask, did you look at the online course on the legal Minnesota cities?
I'm showing right here, it's right there, if you want to read it.
Because I, I looked at it and read the same thing and I read differently from you.
Well, you're reading, but I'm reading, I'm looking right here.
You don't have to notify the individual?
No. I do not.
Just give me a minute, please.
Sure.
Have any of the others of you looked into this and read on this, and do you have any comments? And you're not going with misconduct or employee performance, you're going with allegations of...
Performance, yeah.
You have to specify which one of the seven. And you have to say the statute, like thirteen D. For misconduct of personnel, before closing the meeting, the council must state on the record the specific grounds for closing the meeting and describe the subject to be discussed. Step two, the meeting must be open at the request of the individual who is subject of the meeting, plus the individual should be given advance notice of the existence and nature of the charges against him or her so that individual can make a decision. Step three, the meeting must be electronically recorded and the recording must be preserved for at least three years after the meeting. Step four, if the public body decides that discipline of any nature may be warranted regarding the specific charges, further meetings must be open. That's under misconduct of personnel. The meeting type of employee performance, step one is the public body must identify the individual to be evaluated prior to closing the meeting. Step two is the meeting must be open at the request of the individual who is the subject of the meeting, so some advance notice to the individual is needed to allow the individual to make a decision. Step three, before closing the meeting, the council must state on the record the specific grounds permitting the meeting to be closed and describe the subject to be discussed. Step four, the meeting must be electronically recorded and the recording must be preserved for at least three years after the meeting. Step five, at the next open meeting, the public body must summarize its conclusions regarding the evaluation, and the council should be careful not to release private or confidential data in its summary. So I, we can vote to do, to go in or not, I'm just, I'm saying what I personally read and my vote would be a no, because I feel we've already had a couple of closed meetings without doing it properly, and we're setting ourselves up for penalties and penalties. So if an individual specifically is going to be discussed, if that person has not been notified and given the ability to be there, know what the charges are, I don't feel, I feel we're not doing it properly for violating open meeting laws. I'm, I'm just...
An open meeting is a closed meeting.
He can't close the meeting.
Why can't you have a closed meeting?
You can for the reasons and how I just read, so that's why...
No, you're talking open meeting.
I'm talking from an open meeting to go to a closed meeting, to have a closed meeting about what we wanted to talk about again.
Oh, you're supposed to go from open meeting to closed meeting, you're not allowed.
I just read the reasons and how you do it, how we're supposed to do it. I haven't heard an individual or that they were notified or able to be in it. But that's what I read. And prior to this meeting, I communicated with everybody, um, resources about this, but I wouldn't be the only one doing all the talking and giving my interpretation of it. I'm trying to lead us in the right direction and I don't believe the right process has happened to do that. But if you all want to say, yeah, it is, then go ahead and do it, I'll just decline out of it.
Well, that's fine with me, I guess. Because what I researched said you could do it.
So which one of the types of closed meetings are you calling?
For human resources issues, that's what I'm trying to get their care. Brought the stuff to the first one?
That's not one of the seven types, and if you're going to have a meeting again...
What do you mean, seven types? I don't understand what you're trying to do there. You're trying to make a public meeting out of a situation that's supposed to be a private, private situation for the council.
I, I disagree with that, and we can agree to disagree.
If you disagree, you want.
As a council, we need to move forward.
Hold the person who voted already anyway, so what's the difference?
And if it is about...
End you.
The same person that you've already met.
End you.
If you...
End you.
If it's about the same person...
Don't say that, man, that's fine.
That it's already been about, then it has to be open.
Whatever, let it go down.
Has to be open at their request, open or closed, and you don't have it closed twice. Future meetings after that are open.
Fine, do what you want, Kathy.
It's not...
Just do what you want, do what you want.
I'm asking for...
Do what you want.
I'm asking for other council input on this, it's not you and me alone against each other.
Yes, it is.
I, I agree with Kathy, I'm consistent.
Sure you will, sure you will. You don't think he's done nothing wrong, I don't give a, that's, that's fine, you just keep, you just keep doing it, everything's right, that's fine, you just keep it up, you all keep it up, just keep it up. I proved it wrong many times, but you just keep it up. When this city's falling apart, quit it, that's fine. I, I proved it wrong, you seen all the pictures, I mean, what more do you need? What more do you need?
Okay, we're going to go on with the meeting, we can talk about that when we get to that item, if you feel like it, if you want to. So the approval of the minutes from last meeting, do we have a motion on that? Do we have corrections? Do we have, I know the public body is reading those minutes and seeing those minutes, they're provided up there. I'll make a motion to read something. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes from last meeting, is there any discussion? Without any discussion, we'll have a vote, all in favor, and I oppose. Approval carries. Next is the guest public comment section of the meeting. Um, if you haven't already done so, there's a summary rules for public comment, um, that you can acknowledge before you speak, please, um, stand up to the podium and give your name, or raise your hand and I will, and you can go up there, everybody using one to run up here at once. No public comment at this time?
Didn't want to disappoint you. My name's Keith Haskell and I am in possession of a letter that has the appearance that it's issued by the City of Twin Lakes about 2024 election. It says at the top, City of Twin Lakes, Election 2024. I'm sure a lot of you have seen this because it came in the mail to almost everybody that gets the quarterly newsletter. And it talks about integrity and honesty and transparency of three candidates. They are Pat Nealon for mayor, Sandy Sletton for city council, and Gene Eplin for reelection to city council. Transparency, integrity, and honesty. This seems kind of weird to me that this letter is on the exact same color and exact same paper stock as the quarterly newsletter that went out from the city, the exact same day. Now, to me, that has the appearance that the City of Twin Lakes is endorsing Gene Eplin, Sandy Sletton, and Pat Nealon. It's also kind of interesting that it's the same week a new copier got put in at City Hall. So if we're going to be honest and have integrity and transparency, and since I have five minutes to talk, I haven't, I'm just kind of curious, who's going to stand up? It admits the fact that this was printed on City Hall paper, at City Hall expense, on a City Hall copier. And because I'm a guy that kind of likes to look at evidence, it's interesting that the envelope that it came in has no name or no return address on it, but the handwriting's kind of unique. So I took the envelope that I was given and I compared it with another envelope that did have a return address and a name on it on another matter to a different individual. And it's kind of funny because that's your handwriting, sir, and the one with your name on it is the exact same. Now, just because I don't like calling people out on stuff that I can't back up, you know, some of it has, in my history, the forensic handwriting ability to look at gauges and scales and tools of that feature and compare the lettering in this space. So I got time left, who at city council is going to step up and be honest and transparent and try and tell us if this was or wasn't printed at City Hall, on city paperwork, at city expense, and mailed out endorsing or looking like it's endorsing three candidates? I'll wait, I got time.
I can tell you for a fact, I printed it, I can get you my receipt for the new cartridge that I had to buy, Sammy brought the paper, she's got a receipt, and Pat Nealon bought the stamps.
Great, I'd like to see all of those, do you need a public data request or will you just really turn it over?
Well, I, I don't have it here with me.
I'm not saying you have to see it right now.
And to handwriting analysis, is Sandy and I handled both?
Oh, not all of them, you didn't.
I didn't address any of them.
He didn't address none of them.
So the letter that you wrote to a city resident with your address and name and everything else, that's the identical writing, did they write that for you too?
No, I didn't address any of the envelopes.
Exactly.
But you, you have your...
So the fact that it says City of Twin Lakes, that doesn't bother you that has the appearance that that's an official endorsement from the city?
It says the City of Twin Lakes vote...
City of Twin Lakes election 2024 on the exact same color, the same day, that doesn't have the appearance that it's an endorsement from City Hall? Guess what? The State Election Committee can still play.
I think I need to re-put that.
You go right ahead, free speech.
First of all, there's three colors that were put out and printed on it. Gene printed them, I bought the stamps. Bought the paper, she bought the envelopes, them two addressed envelopes.
At my house.
At her house. So there was nothing illegal done about it, we didn't use a city's printer, we didn't use a city's paper, and Janelle Addy filed a complaint with the state about that, and we got the, the letter back from the state saying that there was nothing to it.
No, that's not what that letter says.
I read the letter from one part of the state that said that they're dismissing it. Okay, don't, do not interrupt me, please.
Go for it, you're right, you're right.
Okay, so, to me, that's all just, I don't know what they're trying to do here, we did everything right, we sent out information about ourselves, they went out and give out, you know, magnets, everybody put on every refrigerator boat for the other three people that are on the ballot, so I don't know what the big issue is, but since he's opened the door here to stuff, and for the last several months, he's complained about attorney fees and the cost to the city. Well, first of all, the biggest part of the attorney fees dealt with the relief association and the false accusations that were made about embezzlement and theft by the old firefighters. Those proved to be false. Then, there was a lawsuit brought by our learned forensic expert here in the corner, Mr. Haskell, against the City of Twin Lakes, mainly the clerk and the mayor, and then there was more attorney fees attached to that, and then our city clerk had to get an order of, to have Mr. Haskell not be here except for public meetings, which couldn't keep him from, so that was more attorney fees. And now, in Janelle's complaint, she even filed, the, the city included the City of Twin Lakes on there. So if you're wanting to know about who's costing the city money and running up attorney fees, it's Janelle Ideman and Mr. Haskell. I'm done, for right now, I'm saving the rest of my time.
Anyone else, before we move on?
Yeah, I'd like to say, again, the relief association should not and will not, again, be talked about by public. It is a private entity, please keep it that way. And again, I do believe even your attorney told you that. Now, I don't know if you guys never read the rules, or maybe you just don't read the rules that you wrote yourself, but number five right there says attacks on specific individuals are not allowed, yet you let it continue every single time.
I didn't attack anybody, I'm just stating a fact.
Hey, I didn't interrupt you, please.
Then get up to the podium.
But, you allow it every time, and I don't see why an attorney bill would have been racked up by me sending something to the state and saying, hey, is this legal for them to do, it gives this appearance. Why would you turn that into your attorney? For me to ask a question?
The city has not received anything about what you're speaking about yet, so I can't speak yes to that.
Okay, so there wasn't a bill like Chad said, as my public comment?
There could be.
As a member of the public.
Okay, anybody else? Then we'll go on with the Freeborn County Commissioner, District Five, Nicole Ekstrom.
Sure, hi, um, is someone standing? Sure, absolutely, thank you. The main thing that I was going to bring to your attention tonight is dealing with the county's cannabis ordinance, and I believe you probably received an email from our zoning department, um, but I'm happy that Matt Van Da is here tonight, and so, um, that is just tonight, the county is having their public hearing for zoning for the county, which the city will have to do their own zoning if that's what they choose to do, um, however, the city will have an option of asking the regulation part, or I'm sorry, the registration part to, to fall under the county umbrella, and so, um, I believe Matt will be able to talk to you about that. And other than that, the county just continues to work on the county budget, hoping to get that levy down a lot lower that we're working on, um, as well as working on replacing our county administrator, and so, that's, that's all I have for this evening, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Anybody else, any questions?
No, I would just like to thank you for coming to our meetings and letting us know this.
Sure, absolutely, thank you.
Fire Department report?
Oh, we had our open house on October tenth, we had nine members present, we had twenty-three citizens that were served, um, that's an increase from the five that we had in 2022, and we had free food and lots of giveaways, we had lots of fun that night. Um, at our meeting, we had ten members and we trained on ropes and knots, and then, um, looking at last month's meeting minutes, I remember I did ask about the flag outside the city hall here being tattered and kind of worn out, and, um, talked about needing a light shined on it at all times, a dedicated light. Um, Kathy stated that we have one in the back, and Gene said that it is city council's responsibility to take care of that, or city's responsibility. I'm wondering, is somebody going to take care of this tonight? It's, it's now been a month, again, and would that be a maintenance person that would take care of that?
Would you mind if we stepped out there and looked at it and you showed me the tatters? I don't see that it's tattered, I see that it's slightly faded, and we have looked in to get in the light, I can tell you that much is not, we don't have the light yet.
We don't want the flag, we want it actually.
We, we looked at the flag and we, I don't see it unsown, I don't see it ripped, I don't see it tattered at all.
Um, would you guys mind, I guess, if it's, if it's not maintenance responsibility, would you guys mind if the fire relief association took that on as our project? And we would face one of these lights out here directly on it so that it would have a dedicated light, and we would replace the flag so that it's not faded?
As to council, I'll say that that's been presented.
Are you talking like the security light out front?
Yeah, the, the one right above the door, there's two bulbs sticking out, if we could just aim one of them directly at the flag, then that would be considered a dedicated light?
Suppose the other one can be on all the time then, shining on the building?
Yeah. I mean, or if, if you don't want it on all the time, can we unscrew the light bulb?
I don't know why we wouldn't let them do it.
Put a dusted dawn bulb in there, it's a little light. I agree, acceptable. I guess we could do that.
Typically, you don't need to make a motion unless it's for something legal or a resolution, we can just, it, it sounds here like I hear agreement, if not, holler at me, that will, yes, Janelle, the fire relief association can take on that responsibility of the flag.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Is that, that's it?
Yes, that's it, thank you.
Uh, the fire department task force report from either Tanner or David, can you give us an update on when you met and what you discussed and the back and forth and how that's, how you're feeling that's going?
We've got just a little bit. Yeah, we're moving forward, we've gotten pretty busy, breathe it out, feel that about on green and even the concrete on sure too, and maybe also about the field too, so I'd say next month we should have a lot better report.
So I know we did, you know, we made it important not to put it off and make the decisions at that one meeting so we could move forward on it, so, okay.
Better report next month.
Okay, thank you. Um, water wastewater report, Travis.
Um, we have, it's an ongoing thing with FEMA, um, they seem to keep adding more steps into the process, but, uh, the inspection was hopefully completed now and everything's been signed, so we're waiting for the next step and hopefully, I mean, we'll get through to the flooding damage. And I had a question too, there is an old valve that we took out of the old pump house when we did that, um, type of project, and I just kept it just in case, and I think Hayward may possibly be able to use it, just to make sure everybody's going to pay it out. It's just crap.
Something we want to keep on hand, or...
We'll never use it, it's a, it's slightly leaky, there's a water valve, but it's not going to be what it's purpose for, so.
Any other questions?
Just to make sure that's okay.
Yeah. Tanner's okay, Gene's okay?
That one's okay.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, like the, like the record showed that it's fine for, show us to take that valve for Hayward, use it.
That's all we've got.
Okay, clerk report, please.
In your package, um, the expenses or the revenue sheets are in, um, the bank bill and sheets, um, for unpaid water and sewer bills, only three, that's pretty good. We have not gotten a new computer monitor installed yet, so plain phone tag with blade was simplified, and then he was out of the office for like a week or so, but I should have an install date this week. Um, this Friday, the eighth, a rep from the legal Minnesota cities is coming to meet with myself and Travis, do an appraisal of our buildings and the equipment, apparently this is done every five years. Other than that, I don't think they're through yet.
Okay, and then included in our packet, there's, um, a fire department expense sheet, and that was, um, answering Janelle's request.
Yes.
So, so that you prepared that and gave that to them, and it was, they, you had done that back in July, so you just updated it with, um, August and September information. And, um, when we do pay fire department invoices, they are getting a copy, that's right.
The invoices.
You know, as the expenses happen.
We've been keeping the July invoices, but I can make them copies.
The originals, and I know to begin with, we were giving them copies, and I just wanted to know if we were still giving them. Okay, sounds like we maybe have it, so.
I don't know about any invoices.
Oh, yeah, they've been put in the basket, and...
There might be one there, Janelle, I don't remember who it was from.
Reese?
Yeah.
Okay.
It looked like it might have been like, um, he was like, I'd yearly need to join something, I didn't open it, but it looked like they're writing from it, so.
I was going to say, there's a couple... I was gonna say, it's a couple days ago, there wasn't anything in there, there's, um, special one.
Yeah.
But since it's in there, I'll back it then.
And then the, um, sheet in the packet that has September, which, what do you want?
I'm done.
That has September twenty twenty-four at the top. Um, just take a look at that and it shows what checks were written, um, on the left and then on the right. It shows what category, what expense category it went into. And then there's a little section for income, revenue, and its category. So next month, when we talk budgets and what we spent for the year, will basically be this monthly sheet put in a year-to-date format, what we, what we've actually spent. So familiarize yourself with that a little bit. If, to feel better when we discuss the budget next month. The next item on the agenda is we move to closed meeting. As permitted by Minnesota statute thirteen D point oh five, the council will be entering a closed meeting to discuss a pending lawsuit, file number twenty-four dash C V dash twenty-four dash fourteen thirty-one with the city attorney. And this meeting cannot be recorded, so we recommend leaving your phones.